... purposes of our presentation tonight. And just to make it digestible in this format, we've selected some to share with you. So, really appreciate being here. Happy with where we're landing on this project. As Heather said, we've got a little bit left to go. Tonight I'm going to talk about the process, review the challenges and opportunities that we had identified, just so we're kind of keeping hold of the rationale for the inclusion of a lot of these items in the strategy. Go over the strategy in greater detail, and then happy to take comments or questions after that. As you'll recall from the last time I was here and spoke with you, about six weeks ago now, we really got underway on this project in February. We brought a bunch of data to the table to help to surface some of the challenges and opportunities that McMinnville faced, and really that the region faced, so that we can contextualize McMinnville's role in the regional economy. We had a lot of engagement with the community, both in broad and sort of narrowly tailored or specific circumstances. We had a really good tour. In fact, now this is the third time we've spent time in the city to try to get to know the city in real terms by walking around and meeting with people, talking with people. So we feel like this is the culmination of a pretty robust effort. The SWOT analysis was an initial output of a lot of that work that we did in February and March. We looked at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, some of which are summarized here tonight, and went from there into a draft strategic framework that we thought really responded to what we were seeing there. That was what I shared with you in late May when I came to speak. And so, from then, some of the goals will undoubtedly look familiar. They've changed a little bit, but we thought we were on the right track, and we've continued on that track since. But now that we're into this final phase of the project, at least in terms of our involvement, as Heather said, we're going to keep the project advisory committee engaged to hammer out some of the final implementation details. But at this point, we feel like not only are the goals sound, we've also got really sound strategies and a robust list of potential projects underneath those strategies that will give not only the city, but other partners here in town, a lot of good guidance for the coming approximately 15 years, the 2032 time horizon here for this plan. So just as a reminder of some of the opportunities and challenges that were surfaced earlier in this project, we thought that, you know, you've got a strong economy in some senses, certainly balanced employment across industry sectors, you've got good industrial employment, you have a robust tourism economy, you have a number of large employers that are sort of a stable economic base for the community, you've got a high quality of life that gets regional and national attention, certainly you have natural assets in terms of your agricultural base, and your proximity to Portland gives you access to infrastructure and amenities that not all towns of your size would have. At the same time, some of the challenges that sort of came up most strongly or were most salient in the analysis were still lagging median household incomes, lagging levels of educational attainment, certainly in terms of higher education, bachelor's degree or higher, and relatively difficult housing affordability issues, which are regional challenges, but nonetheless are being experienced here in McMinnville and are perceived to be worsening. We wanted to add some context to that with a discussion of living wages, because it's a key goal of the strategy to improve or increase, rather, employment that do pay living wages, jobs that pay wages that allow people to live comfortably here within McMinnville. But there's been a lot of conversation in our advisory committee meetings about what constitutes a living wage, and there's no stable definition necessarily. I mean, you can arrive at a calculation of a living wage via a number of methodologies, but we wanted to show a method, and we wanted to demonstrate a method that would allow you to continue to come back and say, as housing prices change, as the cost of living changes, do we need to be shifting our targets? Do we need to be looking at additional industries? Or is one industry no longer meeting our goals? And so, in this case, what we've done is we have looked at current available listings for rentals, both apartments and detached single-family homes. We've isolated two-bedroom units, and then taken the median of those listings, this was in the month of June, that median was $1,260. Annually, that's $15,120. And the Department of Housing and Urban Development at the federal level recommends that for housing costs to be affordable, a home not spend more than 30% of gross income on housing costs. So if you do that math, that would mean that the minimum income required to afford that rent would be $50,400. Or, on an hourly basis for a full-time employee, about $24 an hour. And again, that's not the end-all, be-all for calculating a living wage, but it gives you some context to go by when you're evaluating, you know, why jobs in one industry, or why focus on a certain occupation over another. There are, of course, additional considerations, your household size, lifestyle, your age, and others, that come into play here. But again, this is a sort of guiding point that you can come back to and update over time as you get additional data on cost of living, or as these things change. So we've brought the vision in here from the strategic plan. After conversations with the advisory committee, we decided that really the economic development strategy, as it is sort of a component of the larger citywide strategic plan, shouldn't have its own vision necessarily, it should be more mission-driven, and it should nest within the vision from the strategic plan. So that vision is here. "With a legacy of strong civic leadership, McMinnville is a diverse and thriving city, growing with intention to preserve our small-town feel while expanding opportunities for all." And underneath that vision, the mission in terms of economic development is that McMinnville provides economic opportunity for all residents through sustainable growth across a balanced array of traditional and innovative industry sectors, from steel manufacturing to technology. Economic growth is collaborative and inclusive of individuals from diverse backgrounds. Businesses leverage local and regional talent pipelines while attracting new employees and residents who value McMinnville's high quality of life. Our strong downtown serves residents and visitors alike, featuring unique shops and world-class restaurants that offer locally-produced food products and globally-renowned wine. As we evolve, we prize our small-town roots and we maintain McMinnville's character." And so that statement that we developed in collaboration with the advisory committee is really a synthesis of a lot of what we heard were either current strengths or future opportunities, really something that is ambitious, but also something that we think is actionable. And so you'll see that a lot of the elements of that mission statement are very explicitly included as goals or as high-level strategies in this document. So those strategies are here. We have accelerate growth in living wage jobs across a balanced array of industry sectors, improve systems for economic mobility and inclusion, maintain and enhance our high quality of life, sustain and innovate within traditional industry and advanced manufacturing, foster opportunity in technology and entrepreneurship, be a leader in hospitality and place-based tourism, align and cultivate opportunities in craft beverages and food systems, and proactively assist growth in education, medicine, and other sciences. Those have changed in subtle ways since the last time you saw them. We really focused on making sure we're using verbs that capture sort of the spirit of where our efforts need to be for those specific industries. So, for instance, technology and entrepreneurship, we've refocused it on fostering opportunity because it's a real growth industry for McMinnville potentially, but not one that has a high level of employment in the status quo. That's an example of how these have changed since you've last seen them. That fundamental distinction between foundational goals and strategies and target sector goals and strategies is still the same as it was the last time we spoke, and the target sectors themselves, in terms of the industries that have been identified as opportunities for McMinnville, have not changed. And so at this point, we can do with the walkthrough of the strategy, I'm happy to take comments or questions as I walk through them, because there's a lot of content here. And again, I'll just remind you that the potential tasks or projects, as you see them on the screen, are not exhaustive, and you've got the full list in your packet. We settled on, rather than tasks or actions that were sort of imperative based on the strategy, this list of potential tasks or projects, so that you've got the ability to be agile in the coming years and to really focus on the things that are highest priorities at that time. So these are ideas that you can really seize upon and choose to implement as they come up as, again, high priorities. It gives you some flexibility moving forward while, I think, capturing the spirit of everything that we've heard and identified through this process. So, under accelerate growth in living wage jobs across a balanced array of industry sectors, we have 1.1, maintain and enhance McMinnville's positive business climate. We have improve the dialogue between the city and the local business community, provide additional tools and resources for business formation and growth, and sustain a streamlined permitting and approvals process. We've got a couple potential projects here that are illustrative. One is coordinate with partners to find the appropriate forum for, and regularly conduct small business forums, or distribute surveys to connect with stakeholders and determine the challenges and opportunities facing McMinnville's business community. So just really trying to systematize the communication stream between city and private sector representatives.
Was that kind of that annual business summit to start possibly in 2019?
Yeah, well, the plan document is agnostic to when it would start, I suppose. That's sort of what I mean when I say we move the language to potential tasks and projects. I think we want to make sure that city staff have the flexibility to determine when the proper starting point would be for some of these efforts.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if I could just add, Mayor, so one of the next steps is all of the agencies working in economic development are in discussion about who should take a lead and who are good partners for these potential tasks and projects, and we still need to work through that, we need to take it to our respective decision-making bodies, get it into work plans. So those are all dialogues still to come over the next six months as we move this forward.
Thank you.
The other example I had here was to develop and implement a coordinated onboarding system for new and small businesses. In this case, we actually list some of the potential partners there. Of course, as Heather mentions, we will have a more robust way to identify those potential partners, excuse me, in the final plan document that will be brought to you for adoption. So we'll make sure to document all of this thinking for all of these actions or potential actions in terms of who may be able to take a leadership role and who may be necessary in a supporting role to get it done. 1.2 is to develop McMinnville's brand and leverage McMinnville's strong sense of place to spur economic growth. That includes conducting a formal branding process, reinforcing McMinnville's brand identity through strategic communications, and communicating McMinnville's sense of place through thoughtful design. In terms of the formal branding process, that should be a collaborative process as the potential project indicates with industry-sector representatives and between key stakeholders to identify branding themes. And then elsewhere in this plan document, we talk about how you might filter some of those branding themes down into public realm improvements, capital projects, things of that nature, as well as through the materials that city might distribute to, say, an interested developer or something of that nature. Really making sure that that branding process is reflected in all of your communications, at least to the extent that it makes sense. And that's in line with the potential project listed under 1.2.3, which is to install a noticeable welcome and wayfinding signage at the Three Mile Lane Bridge, thank you, as well as at key entrances to downtown area and other economically significant areas. So identifying where your gateways are, where you're really welcoming people to the city, and then reinforcing those branding themes through improvements to those gateway areas. 1.3 focuses on commercial and industrial land availability. We see this as being foundational, because you need to ensure that over the long term, and this is a long-term planning activity, you have enough land to be nimble when opportunities arise, and that's regardless of which industry you're talking about specifically. So in terms of commercial and industrial land availability, we have 1.3.1, assess land supply for commercial and industrial uses and document lands available for development. And as a potential project, develop a brownfield remediation program in partnership with the state to redevelop the bus barn site, the northeast gateway vehicular junkyard, and downtown auto body shop. And then 1.3.2 is to essentially take the results of those analyses that you would be doing in 1.3.1 and communicate land availability to current prospective businesses. So some of that is already going on, particularly on partner websites where you're trying to showcase available properties, but really want to make sure that you've got a cohesive and a strong way of selling what you've got available to interested parties. 1.4 is to improve infrastructure to serve businesses, visitors, and local residents. That includes external connections between McMinnville and the region. A lot of those are bigger infrastructure investments that may require regional partners, but the city would want to have a seat at the table, at least in those conversations. 1.4.2 is to invest in infrastructure improvements that make it safer and easier for residents and visitors to get around McMinnville, so that's really within the city boundaries, things that the city itself may consider taking on. One potential project that we had identified was to consider improvements to downtown streets and sidewalks, including regrading and low-impact development retrofits to improve drainage and prevent standing water during and after rain. It's really making sure that regardless of what's going on with the weather, people can safely get around downtown, and whether they live here full-time or are just visiting for a weekend, they can really enjoy the experience of being in McMinnville. 1.4.3 is to identify and complete high-priority infrastructure projects that serve McMinnville's current and future business community. And a potential project identified there was to evaluate options to add an alternate freight route. And then 1.5, we have expand efforts in talent attraction and retention, and a potential project there is to work with partners to curate and host McMinnville-based professional retreats or coworking programs. And this is something that we've seen work well elsewhere. There are a lot of private companies doing it actually, and not as many cities taking this sort of endeavor on, but it could be a creative way to introduce professionals with flexible work arrangements to your city and to potentially get them to consider relocating or even opening a business there sometime. You know, people will come for a period of two weeks or a month to work remotely in a place that they would otherwise enjoy being anyway, that may or may not have something to do explicitly with their line of business, and then, after sort of testing it out, determine that's a place they'd like to be and work on a full-time basis. So we move on to goal number two, also a foundational goal, which is to improve systems for economic mobility and inclusion. We have enhance education and workforce development, build career pathways, and provide adult skills training, which includes work with local businesses to specify workforce needs, including occupations and skills, really continuing conversations around how skills and training needs are changing within specific industries and why that might be different from industry to industry, so that whether it's the city or one of the city's partners, you can be facilitating the right conversations and making sure that the connections are being made between your educational institutions, other training opportunities, and the firms themselves. 2.1.2 is to improve access to skill development and education and career pathways at the elementary and secondary levels. So this is really pre-, post-secondary education, right? We want to make sure that there are early interventions available to, say, encourage STEAM learning as one example. 2.1.3 is to increase the access for McMinnville residents to workforce training and retraining resources at local community and technical colleges, really more focused on folks who have already been in the workforce for a while and are considering a career change or are wanting to add skills to their existing repertoire. 2.2 is to provide tools for growing and scaling small entrepreneurial endeavors, which includes connecting businesses with available resources. And also 2.2.2, bit of a mouthful, to support disadvantaged business enterprises, really removing barriers to entrepreneurship more than anything else. And then 2.3 was identified as a strategy to ensure the adequacy of social services, just making sure that there's sort of equality of opportunity, economically speaking, for your residents. 3.1 is to provide a sufficient quantity of housing units that suit local wages and workforce needs. The housing strategy or the housing component of this strategy will point toward the larger strategic planning effort, because there's a more robust conversation around housing there. But really with this goal and strategy, we wanted to make sure that what we are doing is pointing toward that larger effort and acknowledging that housing is an economic development consideration, that firms can't appropriately hire if there isn't housing available for their potential workers, and that folks who already are here and have good jobs may not be able to stay here and may take employment opportunities elsewhere if they feel like they cannot afford housing appropriately. So it's not necessarily the first place or a one-stop-shop for your housing strategy, that would be the larger strategic plan, but we're acknowledging that that's a key component to economic growth and sustainable economic growth. 3.2 is to expand and improve recreation amenities and options, including 3.2.1, update the parks, recreation, and open space plan to evaluate and prioritize investments in recreation infrastructure. 3.2.2, cultivate partnerships to develop and market McMinnville's recreation amenities. This is one where we had a lot of input on potential projects. There are a lot of residents out there with some very good ideas as to what could be done to improve McMinnville's quality of life through recreation infrastructure, and so you've got a long list to choose from there. I didn't include them all here, but a lot of improvements to Joe Dancer Park, existing trails or greenways, improved access to the river, things of that nature, are listed under 3.2. 3.3 is to leverage arts and cultural amenities. This includes, potentially anyway, evaluating the feasibility of a public-private partnership to create a community art space or collaborative studio and cooperative gallery. 3.4 is to invest in McMinnville's neighborhoods, including implement the recommendations of the citywide strategic plan, particularly as they relate to livable neighborhoods, again, another reference to the larger document, just acknowledging that your neighborhoods are sort of critical to sustainable economic growth for a lot of the same reasons I mentioned in the housing strategy, but that not all of that will be contained within this document, that that's an important component of sustainable economic growth, but that the larger citywide strategic plan has a lot to say about that as well. 3.4.2 is to ensure that regulations and city investments encourage livability. 3.5, proactive approaches, take proactive approaches to maintaining McMinnville's character. And 3.6 was a really important one in a lot of our conversations, to become a regional leader in cross-jurisdiction collaboration and problem-solving. Those three are the foundational goals, and after that, we move into the target sector goals. The first target sector identified was traditional industry and advanced manufacturing. Some of the reasons why this was identified as a target sector was because, generally speaking, there are good entry-level wages accessible with lower levels of educational attainment. Generally speaking as well, you have a strong base in this area. You have some of your larger employers within this sector, and so as it pertains to opportunities for clustering or sort of related growth in that area, you have anchors already that can help disperse some of that. So 4.1 is to ensure workforce availability in trades and other mid-skill positions. 4.2 is to connect traditional industry and advanced manufacturing to innovation resources for sustainable growth. And 4.3 is to expand and market land availability for industrial activities, which really was one of the primary constraints that was identified through this process on traditional industry and advanced manufacturing, is some uncertainty around how long your existing supply of industrial land will last, given prospective development opportunities within traditional industry. The second target sector identified was technology and entrepreneurship. Foster opportunity within technology and entrepreneurship includes 5.1, to become a place where small and medium technology firms can relocate and grow. We identified a potential project there of fostering physical connections to existing tech and entrepreneurship hubs through low-cost air services. And 5.2, to provide opportunities for coworking, teleworking, and other arrangements enabled by telecommunications technology. 5.3 is to incubate new businesses and startups. And 5.4, to create new talent pipelines for tech-related occupations. Goal six has been reworded a little bit since the last time you saw it. We actually streamlined it a little. Be a leader in hospitality and place-based tourism. 6.1 is to make downtown the best it can be. 6.2, become the preferred destination for wine-related tourism. 6.3 is to diversify tourism then beyond wine. And 6.4 is to market and promote McMinnville. Some potential tasks and projects there is to maintain robust relationships with Travel Oregon and seek promotion opportunities through Travel Oregon, which really is a very forward-thinking organization from a national perspective, seems to be doing great work relative to some of the other places that we see and we work with. Work with Visit McMinnville and local hoteliers to identify gaps in available conference space and to establish a plan to expand McMinnville's offering for small and large conferences. The seventh goal, also in target sectors, is to align and cultivate opportunities in craft beverages and food systems. That includes 7.1, to maintain prominence in wine while looking for opportunities to innovate within supply chains, viticulture, and production. 7.2 is to locate higher job density, food and beverage activities within McMinnville. 7.3 is to expand R&amp;D for wine and other agricultural or cultivation-oriented and value-added practices. 7.4 is to open new markets for local agricultural products. 7.5 is to encourage a holistic approach to local food culture, improving connections to local producers and cultivating a community of exceptional restaurants and culinary establishments. And 7.6 is to preserve natural assets while ensuring long-term stability in agricultural production, really sort of focusing on the environmental components of making sure that you can remain this agricultural hub where your production is among the leaders in the state and the region. The final goal that we had identified is to proactively assist growth in education, medicine, and other sciences. This is one of the goals that has, I would say, changed more substantially since the last time you saw it. At the strategy level, we've reorganized this a little bit, and we now have 8.1, which is to leverage institutional land assets and support planning for institutional growth and clustering. 8.2 is to assist in recruitment and training to fill industry-specific workforce needs. 8.3 is to support the expansion of programmatic offerings at local institutions. And 8.4 is to improve and expand connections between key institutions and the city of McMinnville. Couple of potential projects that we have surfaced here would be to work with Lynnfield College and Chomeketa Community College to assess demand for education, training, and healthcare and related services, and to expand programming accordingly, and to explore the creation of an aviation education program that leverages McMinnville's existing infrastructure and workforce assets. So that is a brief rundown of the strategy as it exists in this final draft. Happy to have a conversation about any and all of those, including any of the additional potential projects listed in your packet or the process that got us here.
Questions? Comments?
I just had one comment, which is that I thought this was a significant iterative improvement over the earlier drafts. I thought the earlier drafts were quite good as well, but you really did a good job of capturing a lot of the priorities that I think are priorities for the city, and then a whole lot more on top of that, and really framing it in a way that, as you said, I think a lot of this is really actionable for the staff and will give community members a real strong sense of what direction we're intending to go as a city. So I appreciate your work.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. And I'll just add that we've got the version in your packet now. We intend to come back to you, or Heather will come back to you with the final version, which will include a lot of additional documentation, sort of how we got to this point. So hopefully, in that final draft that you receive, not of the goals and strategies, but of the report itself, you'll have a really nice storytelling piece that you can take out and shop around when necessary to show, really show our work as to how we got here and why we think these are the right goals, the right strategies, and the right potential projects.
Other questions or comments? Alan?
Just a comment, Mayor. Thank you, that was well done. I think it covered everything that I could think of and the city council could think of. It's something that we've been working on. I keep thinking of Visit McMinnville and MEDP and everything that's going on, and the bypass, and the shortage of housing, and the land, available lands inventory, and all these things coming together, encompassing all these eight points. And it's going to be interesting in the future to see how it all pulls together. I imagine some will lag, some will move aheads, you know, we'll be catching up to some and holding back on others, and... But I think, to me, it looks like it's really a good, comprehensive final report. And it'll be exciting to see how it comes out. And everything's in place, I think, so we just need to keep moving forward on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Well, it's been a pleasure to sit in on the committee hearings, and I think it's a great plan, so thank you so much for all the work you've done on this, and to Heather and her staff, too, and all the people involved.
Yeah, thank you for your time and participation, and to everyone else, those meetings really moved us forward. Every time we met, we moved forward significantly, so certainly appreciative on our end of all the effort that went into those.
Adam?
Thank you for everything you've done. I concur with what other councillors have said, and the future looks bright for Mactown 2032.
You know, from my perspective, I, you know, we go through a process that is fairly large at the beginning, and lots and lots of talking, communication, a lot of good dialogue, and not, although I have not been to all of the advisory committee meetings, enough to see that in just a matter- see that in just a matter of two meetings, things can change as we have greater and deeper dialogue. And I think we've captured, I think we've captured opportunities, we've captured roadblocks, we've captured things that we could have only hoped for a couple of years ago, and is going to be so critical in our moving forward. And, you know, we'll come back with a final version for the council to adopt that, and then I'm going to turn to Jeff and say that once we get our economic strategy put into place, we'll, at the same time, be going through the larger strategic process, and then later in September-ish, we'll be able to put some priorities around that for implementation. Could you address that, just so the council just really understands where we're going with this?
Sure, Mayor and council. So as Elliot and Heather indicated, after we do a little bit more work over the next several weeks, this will be a final document that will stand on its own. In addition, the core pieces of the document that are most related to projects or initiatives that the city would play a primary or leadership role, those, that information will be included also in the larger strategic plan. We'll spend the next couple of months or so on both of those documents, putting together work plans and timelines and suggestions for priorities and identifying partners and key staff, and the kinds of things that would be required for the council to move forward on certain priorities, as well as some decision-making tools about how to make priority decisions.
Great. I'm going to deviate just for a moment. We've got three partners sitting on the front row, and who have really taken a critical look and involvement in, and just see if any three of you would like to share any thoughts of this process, or your participation that you'd like to share with the council that would maybe be appropriate this time. So Brad, if, any thoughts from your perspective? Thumbs up. Did we get that on camera? Jody?
So, you know, our office, we do a strategic plan review every two years, and it is incredibly helpful to do a course correction and evaluate work plans. This process has been really exciting for us because it's validated some things that we knew, and it's unearthed some things that are surprising. So it's really helped our team start to lay out a course to support this work. I think when you have a plan, you know where you're going, and so to have this, and certainly, I don't want to speak on behalf of everyone as part of the stable table, but this, I believe, will help all of us align and use our resources to the highest return, and so it's been an incredibly valuable process. And it's, I mean, this is where the work starts now, so this is where the fun starts, so thank you for supporting us.
Thank you, Jody. Jeff?
Yeah, I think, I would just like to thank the council for prioritizing this. You know, having a foundation, much like Jody said, that kind of outlines who we are and what, how we connect to the bigger picture is important, but, and equally important is that this document lives on past, you know, God forbid you were all going to move past being council members at some point, and mayors, and you may have new roles in this position, but we have a beacon to kind of keep us on the right track, and, you know, paralel back to what are the priorities for us to achieve, what we want to achieve as a community, so I think it's awesome, and I'm ready to get working, so, well, not that I'm not working now, but.
You're crazy, is that though?
We have a lot, it's a big lift, but I think that's ambitious, it's good. So we need to be ambitious, and we need to be inclusive, and I think this is both, so.
I just want to reiterate something that he said. To have a plan that is a documented course of action, as we change our roles in this community, that document continues to be the map. And I think for people who are new in positions, or, you know, transitioning, that this really gives a strong foundation for new leadership as well.
Thank you. You know, Heather, in your opening report, in your report to us, I know Mactown 2032, we kind of put four lines down that I think would be appropriate, and just to review, and that is McMinnville is old enough to be substantial, young enough to be ambitious, big enough to be industrious, and small enough to be friendly. Those are, those are some pretty powerful words, and, you know, I mean, there has been great work that's been done in this community over many, many years, and it's not been by luck, it's been by hard work. But having, you know, Kelly and I, I think we're the longest on the council, we're, you're coming up to 16 years.
No, no, 15.
15?
Oh, no, 14. When I say 14, 14, 14.
And I think I'm 14 and a half, and this kind of, this kind of plan truly is going to take us to where we need to go. As we've had an opportunity to go to LOC annual conferences, and I, in a couple of weeks, will go to my second annual mayor's conference, and hearing some of the good work other communities are doing, we've got a document now that we can be so proud of. We can be proud of where we've been and what we've accomplished up to this point, but now we can look 15, 20 years down the road and say, this is what we want to look like, and this is how we're going to get there. And it just brings a lot of pride to me as I'm out, being able to share this story with other communities, and just the hard work that this, this community can bring together. So Elliot, again, thank you so very much. Heather, you and your staff, amazing things have been put together, and the inclusiveness that you have brought partners together. I'd be amiss if I didn't acknowledge the hard work that's gone on from that perspective. Any, any parting thoughts, Elliot?
Well, we're not quite done yet, so we'll come back to you with the final plan, and really looking forward to submitting that. Just happy to have had the experience to work here. It's been an impressive community to get to know, and look forward to coming back when I'm not on the clock as well. So thank you all for the opportunity, and I would echo everyone's sentiment that there are, there are big things ahead. So, I mean, the energy here is palpable every time we come to town. It's really a wonderful place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments before we move on in our work session?
Mayor, if I could just say one thing?
Go ahead.
We've talked, we've talked a little bit about it. This is a great plan, it's a great community, we know that, but we've all talked about the potential issues that can derail some of these really forward-thinking points that we've, that we know we need to get to. Some of those things are the downtown, and we've taken great strides in the non-smoking ban, the ban on smoking, and other things to get things under control downtown as far as vagrancy and, and some illegal activities, and that's, that's coming about, and that's one of the items that I saw as a possible negative of derailing our aggressive view we're having at McMinnville and the economic development of it. I think that that's going to help a lot, and once that's really undertaken full speed, the smoking ban and other things, that's a, that's a good step. Another is the rising costs of housing. We've talked a lot about, what do we do about that, if anything? Is it just a natural phenomena of a healthy economy, or is it lack of lands, or combination of both? And so that, as far as drawing people to our community that are workforce. Another thing is that we have quite a community of non-participating community members who don't participate in adding to the community, that are on our city streets and elsewhere. And so that's, to me, that's, that's a big thing that could derail some of our progress. And so I'd like to see if the council can move forward on something more aggressively for, for those who perceive themselves as members of the community, but yet are not participating and contributing to the community. Those who don't pay taxes to their local community, don't support schools or, or anything like that, to where they actually take away from this progress that we'd like to make. So those are just three of the issues, and that's up to us as department heads and city councillors to, to stay on top of those things so that we can keep, keep the ball rolling and not take steps backwards, but just three things that I've observed, so.
Thank you, Alan, for those comments. Anything further? Elliot, thank you.
Thank you.
And let's go ahead, and we'll now move into a discussion of, League of Oregon Cities has put some time and effort through committees and their executive group to help focus their activities as it relates to legislative priorities for the coming, the coming year as we're, we're moving forward. And we do have some time to get back to LOC on this, but we, we have time tonight to have Jeff present this to us and possibly have a bit of a discussion, and we, we may want to wait until we have a full council here, but I know Remy shared with each member of the council some thoughts that she had. So Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. What we presented to you were the 29 policy areas that the league's eight policy committees have identified. The league has asked for the top four issues for the league to consider, the league's board to consider. They also asked for a bottom four, and for other reasons, I'll explain why, we didn't bother to go through that exercise. The executive team, your executive team spent some time reviewing this a couple of weeks ago, and we, we gravitated to six of the items that we identified in the cover memo, for the record beer insider tax increase, permanent supportive housing investment, PERS unfunded liability revenue stream, dedication, property tax reform, third-party building inspection, and wetland development permitting. We felt that all of the items on the list were important, and, and that at least the league should be prepared to maintain local government authority. We did call out two particular items right of way, and franchise fee authority and small area cell deployment, which we thought we should highlight for the league for, particularly important to play defense on. There's not necessarily a proactive agenda that we would recommend there. Certainly, any of the other 29 items are relevant. We felt like the six that we identified probably had the most relevance to our current circumstances here in McMinnville, and they sort of strike a little bit of a balance between doable in a single session and maybe generational in terms of their impact. As the mayor indicated, just for the record, I'll mention that Councilor Drabkin noted her support for permanent supportive housing investment and the PERS unfunded liability revenue stream dedication. She nominated two additional items that were not on the league's list for consideration. One is environmental sustainability, and the final is civil liberties and constitutional rights. And with that, I'll open it up to any council questions or any discussion that you may want to have, and ultimately, if you reach a consensus on a, four items to suggest to the league, we would submit that information.
So a part of your packet was detailing of each of the 29 policy areas that you could read in a little more depth and, and bring to, to the table. I think where we're at right now is we've, we've got, from our executive team, those that implement the policies and procedures that we focus on, have weighed in, and so I'll just kind of open it up to any discussion among this, this team as to, are you in agreement, or are there other things that might be of interest to you? So, Sal?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I was in agreement with Councilor Drabkin on the importance of mental health investment, so the item M. I'm also in agreement, oh no, excuse me, she, she picked N, permanent supportive housing investment. I thought mental health investment was also something that the state could look at, given the, the issues that we have with homelessness and the impact that mental health issues have on, on, on putting downward pressure on, on, on folks who are vulnerable. But I do think that the, probably the, the most significant items on this list are the two PERS reform items. I had a chance to speak with the LOC staff member who serviced that committee, and they have a really good strategy for addressing PERS reform in this session, as well as kind of a, of a big-picture way of tackling the issue that they weren't prepared to kind of roll out publicly yet, but I find myself very sympathetic to that approach. And then the PERS unfunded liability revenue stream dedication, I also thought would be an important thing to focus on.
Thank you, Sal. Anyone else like to weigh in on any of the topics? Adam?
Like Sal, I'd definitely support PERS reform. I, I do believe that there's unfunded liability that could use some revenue stream dedication, but without reform, I, I think you're just kind of pushing more into the same hole, and so we got to find a way to, to alleviate some of that bleeding before we just decide to pump more money into it. So if I had to pick one over the other, I'd pick PERS reform over the unfunded liability stream, but either one of those I could definitely support. Mental health, I think, is definitely something we see being the county seat, and so I would definitely get behind that. And the, the property tax reform was interesting in how that could possibly tie into the PERS unfunded liability revenue stream, if it alleviates some, some tax, you know, stuff on, on other avenues in the state budget. So, you know, those would kind of be my four if I had to pick out of that whole list, but, I mean, as the saying goes, they all deserve attention.
Thank you, Adam.
Generally speaking, I would support most of what the city has outlined. I'm not real hopeful on PERS reform, frankly, so, but focusing on the unfunded liability revenue stream might be something that would be useful. I would probably support it through payroll taxes, it would be my first choice. So, that's where I'm at.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alan, any?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with Kelly.
We'd all like to see PERS reform, unless we're getting PERS benefits ourselves, but you might not be so anxious to do it. An obvious, I don't see what, what, how much progress we can make on PERS reform. I think people are working on it, but I was looking up there at the annexation flexibility. Would that be annexations to the city boundaries, I'm assuming? And I know there has been some flexibility that's come down from the state last couple of years, though maybe Heather could weigh in on that.
Yeah, so that conversation came out of the committee that I sent on, which was the Community Development Committee. It's pretty focused on the discussion regarding voter-approved annexations versus not, and what that process means, and then also island annexations.
Explain the island annexations. Is that something where the city would go in and actually annexate, annex by themselves?
So the, so the island annexation discussion was that it would, that there would be a recommendation for some statutory reform to put the city in a position where they would have to go in and annex the islands.
There's one in particular out there on Grand Haven, near Grand Haven, the end is a little one or two-acre farm there.
About a half dozen islands, probably, here in the city of McMinnville. The concern, so when we talked about it as a committee, it's really been driven by a couple of communities, particularly in their issues associated with it, and so the solutions are very community-specific, I guess I would say, rather than more broad-based.
Yeah, thank you.
And then just from my perspective, I think I can support what, what the cities come up with, with the permanent supportive housing. up with, with the permanent supportive housing investment, PERS unfunded liability, and property tax reform, which is classes I've been to a number, and then the third-party building inspection. I'm very supportive of PERS reform, but that, I think it ought to be an ongoing LOC approach, because that's going to be done legislatively, and they seem to be dragging their feet on that. A concern I have, and I can support the mental health, but reform that's happening there is going to hit the county and not the city, and so it's out of our, it's out of our somewhat jurisdiction of those dollars being spent, and so I would, I'd want to put my collateral maybe some other place where it could truly, truly affect us. I will also indicate that, you know, as the executive team was looking at right-of-way and franchise fee authorization and small area cell deployment, that, I think we send a strong message that that is something that we keep our eye on. It is being talked at the federal level, big time. I've been to two sessions with the American Public Power Association, and I've taken, I probably have 10 hours of classes into that small area cell deployment, and that could become tremendously a critical topic if the federal government goes down the path of giving these cell structure to the vendors more opportunity to put parameters around cell development on our poles, and then, you know, the right-of-way franchise taking the ownership of poles away from the cities, and so I think those are something that, I know Water and Light is very critical of some of those types of things, and the municipality utilities, strong, strong voice on that right now. So it would be one that I just would share, that we have an interest in it, and keep us informed and keep lobbying in that direction. Okay, any other comments?
I have one comment, which is that I'm looking at the PERS contribution rates for city employers, and I'm pretty sure McMinnville has the highest employee contribution rate out of just about any city in the state right now. And I realize that PERS reform is a challenge at the legislature, but it, partly because it's such a big, heavy lift to get it done, but unless we keep putting pressure on those issues and touching the pieces of that system that we can touch, we're always going to be underwater in terms of revenue. I mean, right now, as my understanding is, one out of every three new dollars we bring into the city is going to cover unfunded pension liabilities. So I just think that that, for me, that's one that I really would encourage the council to take a strong look at.
And I would agree, Sal, in that arena. It's got to be on, it's got to be something that we're advocating for all the time, or that expense is going to continue to spiral out of control, and at some point is going to have devastation to schools, municipalities, the same. So Jeff, have we given you enough direction to?
Oh, no. So here's, so here's what I, what I see. I see that five of you have said the PERS unfunded liability, four of you have mentioned PERS reform specifically, and then there's, there are three items with two of you expressing support, and another four with one of you expressing support. Don't want to put too much pressure on you, Kelly, but I only have your name down once on the unfunded liability, so if you do it.
I said I supported with the city.
Well, but there's six, and we need to get down to four.
Oh, we need to get down to four. Okay.
It'd be better if you didn't all pick six, because then we'd still have six to talk about.
Why can't we have six?
Just, you know, we're trying to follow the rules set out by the League, so I guess...
I would throw out wetland development permitting.
Okay.
And, let's see. I don't know, I like five.
Which five?
The one without the wetland development permitting. Well, now, are you saying the right-of-way and franchise fee authority, that's also part of the list?
So I think, I think what I would suggest in terms of comment, I don't know that there's a proactive legislative strategy for either of those two that we felt real strongly about at the executive team level, but we felt like that those are two areas we wanted to call out where local government authority needs to be maintained, and so those would be sort of more defensive positions. So we wouldn't put those in our top four, but we'd talk about them in the comments section below.
Okay, I guess my, personally, I feel like the property tax reform, as much as I think we need it, I think it's not likely to go anywhere.
Some of these are really heavy lifts.
So I would probably throw that one out.
Okay. So of the, so of the six we identified...
Beer insider tax, permanent supportive housing investment, PERS unfunded liability reserve stream dedication.
Got it, okay.
Third-party building inspection.
Alan?
Jeff, what were those six that you mentioned right off the bat?
So beer insider tax increase, which is number, which is letter D, permanent supportive housing investment, which is N, PERS unfunded liability, which is P, property tax reform is R, and wetland development permitting is B.
You had mentioned, Councilor Drapkin, since she's not here, you mentioned civil liberties.
Yeah, she added two that were on the list, environmental sustainability and civil liberties and constitutional rights.
So that has not gone through the LOC committee process yet?
Yeah, that's something that we just, she brought that up.
So, I mean, I think those are valid, but I don't know that it'd have much traction if it's not on their list.
Right.
From a statewide perspective. So do we have a, now with Kelly's?
So, let's see, if I got, so Kelly, you said you would, you would pass on property tax reform just because of the heavy lift?
Right.
And then what was the other one that you said you would pass on?
Wetland development.
The wetland. Oh, so you'd pass on that one, okay. Okay, so, so what I would suggest is, at this point, since Remy picked two things on the list, and she freelanced for two, and Wendy hasn't gotten a chance to weigh in, I can put this together into an email to the whole council, ask Remy if she'd like to pick two things that are on the list, let her and Wendy both know where the conversation happened, and get them to weigh in, and I can loop back with the council electronically. I think the deadline is in second week of August or something like that, so we've got time to do that work electronically, and then I can report back to you. So I'm just going to go through it real quick to make sure I got, I've got everything captured, and you tell me if I've got it wrong. I've got Alan down for annexation flexibility, got Kelly for beer and cider tax, I've got Sal and Adam on mental health investment, Remy, Scott, and Kelly for permanent supportive housing, Sal, Adam, Alan, and Scott on PERS reform, Remy, Sal, Adam, Kelly, and Scott on PERS unfunded liability, Adam and Scott, pardon me, on property tax reform, Scott and Kelly on third-party building inspection.
I think the only one you missed of mine, I picked M-N-O-P. And I think you might have missed N.
Oh, I missed N, the permanent supportive housing. Thank you, Sal. Okay, so that's, so that's what I've got.
With Scott's reasoning with the mental health investment going to the county, and we wouldn't really see it, I'd be fine moving that to D, knowing that the beer insider tax is so low on the national average.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, second lowest to Kentucky.
All right. So I'll put that together in a memo, I'll share it with everybody, but particularly ask Remy and Wendy for any feedback they have, and then I'll loop back with the council one more time before we submit our choices to the League.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we've got 20 minutes. I'm wondering if this would be a good time to report out on our committee assignments. I think that would shave a little time off of our, of our council meeting, unless you really want to linger for 20 minutes before we come back. So let's go ahead and just do a reporting on our, our committee assignments. I'll start with Adam.
The July YCOM meeting is canceled, and our August meeting is in the process of being rescheduled to a different date, most likely to just be moved out a week, and the Tri-Tech system is still on schedule with our newer project managers. It was a little behind schedule, but now that these new people came on a couple months ago, it seems to be clicking right along.
Thank you.
Sal? Council of Governments has started a new advisory letter for cities that they send out. I just got the first one of those today. I haven't really had a chance to parse the whole thing, but lots of interesting information in there for us.
Great. I'll jump down to Alan.
The Airport Commission will be meeting in September, regular scheduled meeting. This latest one was canceled due to insufficient agenda. Affordable Housing Task Force was postponed, put off till this next month, and do we have a date yet for July?
Fourth of Wednesday.
Fourth of Wednesday for both McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force and the Historical Landmarks Committee, both will be meeting on the fourth. So I, those meetings did not take place, as far as I know, this past month, so we're looking to pick up the pace a little bit this month and September and August.
Thank you. Council President Menke?
I believe I've reported on everything the last time we met that was recent. I talked a little bit about the Parkway taking a new tact in regard to how they might, you know, ask the cities for dollars. I just bring it up again because I find it interesting, is tying it to right-of-way purchases and seeking first the city of Newburgh and the county to see how they feel about it, because if they don't feel good about it, nobody else does.
Great.
But I don't really have anything else, because McMinnville meets this week, and I believe Jeff did a nice synopsis last time, so.
Okay. Tomorrow, MIRAC meets tomorrow, and we've got a full agenda that Heather sent out, so we'll be able to report on that at our next meeting. Today, Kelly and I had an opportunity to attend a senior's official workshop for all hazard preparedness, and it was an emergency management seminar that was put on with FEMA dollars, and we had a number of city and county officials going through a all-day program talking about emergency preparedness, going over principles of preparedness and where are we, what do we do, and then we did some case, case study worktop, top sessions that were very interesting, to say the least, of some of the major catastrophes that have happened across the United States. We had two individuals that were our instructors, one that had been a trainer for the FBI and brought that experience, and then we had, from the city of Los Angeles, the, from their fire unit, the lead person for their strategic and special, I'll call it forces, but the specialty of taking care of hazardous waste and all of those types of things, lots of experience, 35 years of fire experience. And so I know Kelly and I just walked away with, you know, how prepared are we as a community, given the Cascadia or any other of a number of things, whether it be wind, snow, flooding, those types of things? And so she and I are going to debrief that a little bit, and probably come to the council a little bit and talk, just to update you on that, but a really informative session this, today that we had on, on that.
I think in that discussion, probably just what the, what the mayor and what the council, what their roles are.
What our roles and responsibilities are.
Part of that, from our perspective.
Yeah, because we're not going to, we, again, we set policy and procedure, and it's implemented by staff, and, but we do have some specific roles, and we need to understand those, and so, just to help us in our training and learning from that perspective. Anything else that, that the council would like to bring up in our work session? Okay, well, I'll go ahead and close the work session, and then we'll reopen our council
Melissa, we all set? Okay. We welcome everyone to the July 10, 2018 City Council meeting. And I will call us to order. Adam, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We come to that point of our meeting this evening where we have comments from citizens. And so, anyone that would like to provide comments to the City Council, speaking on topics other than a topic that's already on the agenda, a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. And we'll limit those comments to three minutes with a total of 30 minutes. Anyone like to address the council this evening? We just have regulars here, don't we?
I feel, I should just say you had some.
(Laughter). Hearing none, then we'll just, we'll move past that. We have a proclamation this evening. And so, if I could have Brian Berg and other members of the IAFF Local 3099 and MDA Coordinator Amanda Borch to come up, we have a proclamation of filling the boot days. This is always a good time to, to get together because we have fun with this, don't we? Let me go ahead and, and read the proclamation. Fill the boot days, whereas McMinnville Fire Department has been working with the Muscular Dystrophy Association in their fight against neuromuscular disease. And whereas, fill the boot is an opportunity for Oregon firefighters to ask community members to drop donations into their boots to help local families served by the MDA in the state. For over 60 years, the firefighters and MDA's have partnered in this fight against this muscle wasting diseases. And whereas McMinnville Fire Department has spent many hours collecting monies on the street for this campaign. And whereas firefighters locally and nationally are the largest contributors to the MDA, McMinnville firefighters collect, collected $12,081 in 2018 to help fight in the, fight against 43 different types of neuromuscular diseases. Now therefore, I Scott A. Hill Mayor of the City of McMinnville do hereby proclaim July 12th, 13th, 2018 to be McMinnville Fire Department Fill the Boot Day for the City of McMinnville. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and cause this official seal of the City of McMinnville to be fixed to this the 10th day of July 2018. Signed, Scott A. Hill Mayor. So, thank you.[244.34][244.34](Applause). Proclamation.
Thank you.
Any, any words you guys?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board. This is Amanda Borch, she's representative of the MDA. We're just gonna have her say a couple of things kinda about the event a little bit.
Thank you. Well, I wanted to thank you all in the great city of McMinnville for allowing us to do another Fill the Boot. I have a family member with muscular dystrophy, so it means a lot to me that you guys all come behind us and support us. We have summer camp coming up this week, so it's our favorite time of the year. And we do represent Inure County, 32 families, and three of those attend our camp.
Thank you. I'm guessing you may want to pass the boot in this group. So, some of us may have to write an IOU. And you get more when you do an IOU than with the dollars in the, so I'll write out the IOU, and as you pass it, I'll put it in.
Thanks, Mayor.[294.33][294.33](Laughter). He's gonna get it from me later.
I got cells.
Come back to me in just a second.[298.33][298.33](Laughter). You know where I'll be.[300.66][300.66](Laughter).
Thanks, guys and gals for, for that. And success to you and your drive. And, and I know this community, they appreciate the efforts, so thank you.[314.27][314.27](Applause). And our Planning Director Heather Richards will present, and we do have the full report in our packet. And so Heather, we'll turn that over to you to, to present.
Oh. Wow, very smart. Not so smart. Excuse me. I get used to new technology. Is it embedded in it?
You know, you just have to, you're on the wrong presentation. There's another one down there.
So I do need to slide all the way down. It is embedded.
Oh, I see. There we go.
Hey, boss, that's what was confusing me too.
That's right.
Okay. So, tonight I wanna talk to you about the Yamhill County Transit Development Plan. It has been a plan that's been under evaluation and refinement and amendment for the past two years. The City of McMinnville's been participating in that process. I'm bringing it to you tonight because it does affect us from a land use perspective in terms of how we move forward with land use planning. Our comprehensive plan policies and our zoning ordinance are dependent upon the transit plan in terms of where we place high density and medium density residential uses and high density, medium density commercial uses. We have comp plan policies that are really specific to that. So, the Yamhill County Transit Development Plan did have a consultant team working on this, DKS Associates, who is a well-known transportation consultant team, and then Nelson Nygaard, who is really the go-to transit planning team in the state of Oregon. The purpose of the project was to provide strategic guidance to YCTA, who's the agency that oversees transit for the county, to serve both urban and rural users in the county for a 20-year period. So it is a 20-year planning period for them, which is the same planning period that we use on the urban side in the city. The plan itself looks at existing conditions. It looks at goals and performance measurements. And then there's two different places for community input. And then it comes out as sort of a land use plan and an operations plan. So, operations and management is a big part of the discussion, so it can be sustainable in terms of a service, but land use is also part of the discussion in terms of future forecasting of where we'll see that type of density. Oh, mind transferred as well around. So I apologize, my PowerPoint's migrating on this.
Is this widescreen? Is that why?
Okay. It's okay, we'll, we'll just work through it. Ignore, ignore the misplaced shapes. So, the potential desired outcomes for a successful plan is to optimize and reorganize the existing service, evaluate what's working, what's not working, enhance the infrastructure so we can plan for the future, provide a revenue-neutral, increased funding scenario. So if, if we're just operating with our existing funding, what does it look like? If we're able to get increased funding, what does that look like? What's important to the City of McMinnville is its identifying transit-supportive land use policies, and it provides local jurisdictions with guidance for planning and decision-making as we move forward with thinking about our next 20 years and where growth is going to occur. This is a really important piece of that for us. Also for the City of McMinnville, looking at meeting needs that are expected from future regional growth and tourism, and then preserving the function of the state highways by expanding regional transit and reducing single-occupant vehicle travel. So those are some of the goals that were plugged into this particular planning process. The transit goals for YCTA overall are mobility, accessibility, passenger experience, safety and security, livability and economy, and efficiency and financial accountability. So when talking about transit, there's always a lot of discussion about how can the resources be allocated? And there's a tension there because there are two types of riders. There are rider, dependent riders, riders who really have no other transportation choices. And they're somewhat disparate in where they're located. So being able to provide the transportation for them so that they can get to work, or get to medical services, or shopping services, that's usually sort of the first type of service that a transit program provides. But it is low ridership, and the coverage is a large area. So functionally, when thinking about how to fund a program, that's very difficult to fund. Usually as transit programs continue to grow, they grow into a more high-productive state where you're getting a lot of choice ridership. So that's, that's in your larger cities where the transportation pattern has become such that the choice is commuting via transit, via metro into downtown Portland or something like that, is a better choice than driving in. And once you're into that type of transit program, then you have a higher production of ridership and, and a better funding model. For communities the size of McMinnville, which is the largest city in Yamhill County, usually you're on the low ridership side of the programming because we just don't have the density of population. And we still have a network that supports independent vehicle ridership. So transit planning, all cities in the state of Oregon, once they reach a population of 25,000, need to do a transit feasibility study. McMinnville actually launched into that early on before they reached a population of 25,000. U adopted a transit feasibility study in June of 1997. That transit feasibility study has, has governed our land use decisions since then in terms of our comp plan policies and our zoning policies. And you'll see it here, laid out for you. It talks about current routes and proposed routes, and then future routes. And so we've used all of that as we've thought through, where, where should high-density residential go? And if you'll notice here in this map, it shows a future conceptual route going uphill road, up to Baker Creek, and around back down into the downtown area. And that's driven some of the decision-making for some of the higher-density residential that we're seeing today in our subdivisions.
Heather, how often is that type of a transit feasibility study updated? We're looking at this being, what, 20 years old at least?
Yeah, so it's, it's usually updated more often than it has been here, but that's also the story behind a lot of the long-range planning efforts. But the Yamhill County Transit Authority, by taking the lead and doing the transit development plan for the whole county, you'll see, I'll bring to you the McMinnville-specific information, and that updates this feasibility study for us. So, things to note is you have a north-south route that serves a lot of the commercial area, and you have an east-west route that's serving residential and bringing them to commercial as well as out to Shemetica Community College. So, when talking about transit programs, the type of program that serves a community grows as the density grows as well. So we talked a little bit about that choice ridership versus dependent ridership, and the different types of vehicles that support them. So a lot of times, communities like McMinnville are in a dial-ride program where you have a van going to pick somebody up. You also now have fixed routes here where we have smaller buses that are on fixed route systems that are picking people up. And then as the density increases in development, you eventually get to a large bus program that runs every 15 minutes or so. And that's the ideal program because as, as it becomes more consistent and reliable, you get more and more choice ridership participating as well. I wanted to show some of these because I thought they were interesting. This comes from the study in June of 1997. This is a 1991 employment density map. So it shows what was the employment density, when this transit feasibility study was put together. You'll see most of it, so the darker colors are higher density. Your highest, highest-density employment areas were the commercial area, so the downtown area, and then Highway 99. And then it also had a projection for 2016, so just two years ago, what was expected to be the, the employment density spread throughout the city. What's interesting to me is those large tracts of land that are out there by Highway 18 that still remain undeveloped were expected to be high-density job development by this time period. So, we are going to be launching into a three-mile lane area study. One of the reasons is relative to these large tracts of lands and why they haven't been performing to this level, and what we need to do to, to encourage that. And then you see a more even distribution of employment density across the industrial areas. And we just heard through the Economic Development Strategic Plan that we have a good diversity of industry in the City of McMinnville at this point in time. This is the residential maps. Mark's gonna appreciate this, I think. So this shows the 1991 levels of density, same thing, darker colors, higher density. This is a very typical density map for a city where it's showing higher density in the city center. And then the intention by 2016 is that the western side was gonna be developed at a higher residential density as well. I can tell you, we've pulled the maps for the density levels on the western side with all the planned developments that have been adopted, and we are not seeing that type of level of high density in terms of the residential development there today. And so, when putting together the transit routes, it looks at those different density levels, employment and housing, and decides where's the best place to put the routes. And you'll see how that's described. It's very reflective of what those current conditions were and what the forecasted conditions were. This is a map that shows what it was expected to be in terms of residential units throughout the city as well at that time. And then our zoning map reflects that. So, in 2010, Mayor, you asked me about when we update these types of plans. In 2010, we adopted our Transportation System Plan. Part of the Transportation System Plan is, is a transit chapter, so it goes back and looks at the transit plan, see if it's working for the community. If it's not working, then has some discussion of improvements. At the time of the transportation, transportation system planning here, it was identified that it was working, the current system for the City of McMinnville. And then it identified some policies. So these are the policies that we follow at, at the city, that we will have transit-supportive street system design. So the city will include the consideration of transit operations in the design and operation of street infrastructure. That's important as we build new streets, we need to be considering transit as part of that. Transit-supportive urban design, through its zoning and development regulations, the city will facilitate accessibility to transit services through transit-supportive streetscape, subdivision and site design requirements that promote pedestrian connectivity, convenience, and safety. So we've been working with the Planning Commission and planning staff, with developers on those places where there's anticipated future transit routes, so Hill Road being one of those, to ensure that we have pedestrian connectivity through the subdivisions to the, the future potential transit stops on those roads. And you see that in the subdivision plans coming to you. The city will continue to work with YCTA to identify and help develop supportive capital facilities for utilization for transit services, pedestrians' facilities as well, and intermodal connectivity. So this is the existing service for YCTA. It operates on an inner-city program, so buses that are bringing people from city to city. And then, and as you know, we have the transit hub here in the City of McMinnville. And then McMinnville and Newburgh each have fixed route systems, the more robust fixed route system being here in McMinnville. This shows the, the different inner-city routes, and, and how Newburgh and McMinnville have their independent fixed routes. The YCTA has an annual operating budget of about $2 million. They have four intercity routes. They have about 300,000 annual rides. A ride is considered every time somebody boards a bus or, so if I'm getting on a bus in Hillsborough to go to the Grand Ronde, and I stop at, in McMinnville at the transit hub, and then get on another bus, I'm now two rides to get to my final destination. Nearly 50% of the rides are for work commuting. And then you try to achieve a high-density of jobs and people within a quarter-mile of the routes and stops because that shows your feasibility. And McMinnville is showing a pretty good one for its fixed route system, so 70% of people and jobs are within a quarter-mile of transit. This shows how the YCTA ridership and service hours are divided between the local fixed routes and the inner-city program, and how the ridership serves that. So we have a higher ridership and lower service hours in the local fixed route system, so they're showing good productivity there. And then the inner-city is a little bit more dispersed. This shows how people are using the system today. So you, you, the bigger bubbles are obviously more riders. So, the McMinnville transit hubs, the largest, that's where people are getting on to their different connection points. And then there is a lot of activity in Newburgh, Hillsborough, Hillsborough, and then Tigard as well. Tigard is where people can get on to the metro system. This shows the McMinnville fixed route service on the weekdays. And the McMinnville fixed route service is serving a lot of commercial needs, so there's a lot of shopping needs of bringing people to the larger shopping destinations. You see Walmart and Big Five there. And then also bringing a lot of people out to Health and Human Services and the Shemetica Community College as well. And then the intercity routes in terms of how people are getting around between the smaller cities is demonstrated here as well. And then the weekend for the intercity route. So a lot of ridership goes down on the weekend. There also is less bus service on the weekend, so it could be reflective of that as well. So this is a great example of choice ridership. So this is the dial-ride program in McMinnville in terms of dial-ride trips. And you can see from YCTA, they're, they're providing service, but it's hard to be efficient with that type of service provision. Key issues from existing conditions is there's a lack of awareness in the community of what the transit system is, what the different routes are, the consistency of the service. And then regional connections are useful, but they're not very reliable, and that's because of transportation right now on the different road beds aren't really reliable with congestion and traffic jams and things of that nature. Route alignment's generally pretty good. We heard from the public process that there were some immediate changes that could be could be made to route alignments to make them better, and I'll talk you through some of those. Weekend service is pretty low, and there was requests to have more weekend service. And then the, the shopper routes were taking people to the different shopping services. And you saw in McMinnville, that was the largest piece of our ridership. Currently, where the stops are, are in a very disadvantaged place for people in terms of we're dropping them off at the edge of 99, and they need to walk into Walmart or Winko. That's a pretty long trip when you're burdened with groceries. So we heard from them in, in terms of how can we make that more accessible. So the future vision for the 20 years of, the next 20 years of transit is really sort of to expand the system a little bit more, to provide better connections, and then really start working on providing more reliable programming with the existing system. So expanding into Portland is one of the future visions for that work-commute trip. Also, expanding into downtown Salem is a vision as well. By expanding into those two areas, then we can get people connected on to those two transit programs too, and they can continue further from there. And then to make more routes on all the other intercity programs. The planned timeframes talks about what immediate changes can be made that are cost-neutral, what near-term changes can be made that are affordable within the existing financing scenario, and then what are some short-term, midterm, and long-term changes that can be made. So this is the existing system, and this shows how it's intended to become a little bit more robust in terms of the internal, existing programming and some expansion areas. There was a lot of public and stakeholder input, or a lot of outreach for it. I would say that, I, I would have hoped we had more responses than we actually had, but there was a rider survey done. There was, the consultants worked at many different community events and destinations, and community surveys went out as well. Interestingly, one of the things we had them look at was how to serve the tourism industry and start mapping out where the wineries were in Yamhill County, and whether there was a transit opportunity to serve those. As you can see, the wineries are fairly disparate in terms of how they're geographically located. And so with that, we came to a conclusion that it's very difficult to serve the wineries with a transit program outside of what's internal in the two cities of Newburgh and So for McMinnville, the changes are not that, it's not, it's not a big shift, a paradigm shift in terms of the proposed changes, which is good because that means our comp plan policies are foundational and can continue to move forward. We're really looking at just like their overall program shifts, making the program a little bit more robust, refining it, and doing some extensions of the services. The immediate changes we're looking at are those commercial services, so a route change for the, for Route 3, which goes up and down 99, bringing it in behind Winko and, and providing stops closer to Walmart and Winko so that people can be served that way. That will look at efficiency as well. We're also looking at renumbering the McMinnville routes so that they're easier to understand, and then marking bus stop locations and place shelters. So that's that community awareness piece. We don't really have a branding program out there. We also don't identify where the bus stops are. So we have a bus stop in front of the Community Development Center. Many people don't realize that because there isn't a marked stop there.
And, and are those signed changes a part of their upcoming budget?
Yes, so I'll walk you through that as well. Potentially Phase 2 after the plan adoption, so it was again in that immediacy, but not right away. They're looking at how to be more efficient on the other side of 99, serving the Safeway Complex too. So some of the extensions that we've talked about is that Route 3 that goes up along 99, is there, are there other, just, just as a discussion of how do we serve the Walmart-Winko Safeway Complexes better? Are there other stops along the way that the ridership was interested in being better served? Relative to the City of McMinnville, there was discussion about the Senior Center. So there is interest in bringing a stop to that location as well. And they're looking at the efficiency of how they migrate that route right now to make that happen, and I believe, I hope, are in discussion with your team on that. They're also looking at extending Route 2 so that it's serving the Shemetica area a little bit more robustly in terms of Virginia Garcia and the medical services there, and then also extending it into the northwest area, a little bit further as that area grows and develops. And then the longer-term discussion is retaining that Baker Hill, Baker Creek-Hill Road potential fixed route system, and doing it in such a way that it connects in with the other routes that are being planned. So this shows the east, the new east discussion in terms of getting to the medical services out there by Shemetica. The, the whole, as we work through these, we're trying to set up a system where there is, there's more service and more reliability, and the buses are running more often. So the, you'll see the routes start to shrink a little bit in terms of all the little tentacles going off of it. But the hope is that with more service and more, more often running, that people will access it better. And this shows how it will go out west, and then the service to Baker Creek Road and the Hill Road area in terms of the long-term. And that reinforces our comp plan and, comp plan map and zoning map in terms of higher-density residential there, nestled there around Baker Creek and Hill Road. Some of the capital priorities are the signs and marking the bus stops, that's in the first-year budget. New buses with consistent markings and branding, again to bring awareness to the program, programming. And then doing some ADA improvements with the, and shelters along the fixed route. So we will probably hear that discussion here in McMinnville, and what does that mean for us? Looking at technology upgrades so that we can get out the information better. And then improvements, so this already happened in the process. We heard a lot of people talking about, they can get to Virginia Garcia if they're able to get down Cumulus, which is currently blocked from Shemetica Community College. We then engaged the college and said, is there a way we can use that fire access lane for transit as well? They've been in dialogue and just recently came to an agreement of how that can occur. So that's already moving forward in terms of a solution.
So for bus only, though?
Uh-huh, yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. Some of the technology and programs, I'm sure you're all familiar with this, but just like, we use technology to find parking in the cities and Uber and Lyft. like, we use technology to find parking in the cities and Uber and Lyft. You can do the same thing to discover where the bous, where the buses are on the system, and then also where the stops are. This shows some of the estimated costs for the different capital facilities. What's interesting to me on this is, in the long term, there is interest in doing a McMinnville bus maintenance and storage facility. So we'll be in discussion with them as to what does that look like? Are there opportunities to collaborate from the city side for that? I know in Redmond, we worked with the transit authority there and built, they got a grant. We developed an agreement with them. We built the facility and provided the vehicle maintenance for them. And then we also used that for our own vehicle maintenance program, so it created a partnership. And then planning for the expansion of the McMinnville Transit Center. So at some point in time, they're going to be looking for either additional space for that or a new location for that. So how do we pay for it? I'm not here to talk to you about funding, but there's some big movements happening right now. So there's some obvious funding for this program. There was the recent House bill, which did the employee payroll tax, which is going to be generating a lot of funds for transit here in the state of Oregon in the next five to 10 years. So right now, immediately, they're going to see an increase in revenues of $500,000. That's 25% increase in their budget. So Mayor, that's where the bus stop signs are coming from. And then they expect to see $1.1 million by 2020. So in two years, a 50% increase of their budget. So those are paying for those immediate and near-term improvements. And then it will continue to generate, that payroll tax will continue to incrementally generate more and more funding for transit. And so that's the expectation in terms of the different funding scenarios. So next steps, the final draft has been put together. The Yamhill County Transit Authority Board of Commissioners are looking at it here next month. It will be adopted in September. We'll probably bring you some McMinnville comp plan and TSP amendments based on some of the minor refinements that are taking place in the discussion for adoption, maybe later this fall after that goes through the process. And that is the transit plan. Are there any questions?
Heather, on that statewide employee payroll tax starting in 2019?
Uh huh.
Is that something that is matched by employee, employer? Do you know? Have you heard anything?
I don't know. Do you know?
The payroll tax?
Yeah.
It's not matched by the employee, or employer, sorry. It's just taken, I'm looking at it right now.
Oh.
We all know about it because we got notice that it was coming out of our checks.
That was my question. Who gets to pay for that? It's employees then, or?
Employee.
Yep. Any other questions?
You know, as we look at the enhancements on Hill Road, as you're traveling north on Hill, as you come close to Baker Creek, there's a turnout there. Is that for future bus use in that we have an apartment there, or was that just a road design?
You know, Mayor, I don't know the answer to that. I can visit with Mike and his team and get back to you. I know there was discussion, when the design for that project was put together, they met with the Yamhill County Transit Authority to talk about how it can serve a future route. Because routes, because the stops haven't been identified yet, I know there was some reluctance to actually build all the infrastructure for the future stops, but to lay the foundation for it, so.
Yeah, it's just kind of pretty obvious that there's that turnout there.
Okay, great.
And then, and I don't know that you would have the answer on this. The cost of riding a bus, do you know what that cost is? I mean, I'm guessing it's a certain cost in town, a greater cost to go to transit centers like in Tigard, Hillsborough, Salem, but...
I don't have that. I can tell you that anybody who's interested in that can go to the Yamhill County Transit Authority website, and it has all that information there. From the land use planning's perspective, I know that a new fixed route system costs about $600,000 a year to operate. That's not subsidized by ridership. So all of the transit program is not full cost recovery.
Correct. Any other questions?
Like the report, and I definitely, what I've heard throughout the community is just mark bus stops instead of just a random spot. So I think that's good. And I've also heard the concern of, you know, the walking across the highway full of groceries and things like that. So I think you guys definitely captured everything that I've heard in that report. And, yeah, Mayor Hill, single day pass is $2.50, unlimited monthly is $35, and a 10-day pass is 18 bucks.
Any other questions? Again, this is just, you know, it's primarily informational when it comes to what's happening with Yamhill Transit. But as it deals with our land use and our master plan, it's very pertinent. And it looks like we've done a good job in protecting and looking for the future. So hearing no other questions, thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That takes us to our consent agenda this evening. We have one item on consent agenda, and that's an oil CC limit on-premise license request from Sushi K.O. Express located at 877 Southwest Keck Drive. Anyone like to remove that item from our consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Allen and seconded by Kelly. All those in favor may, accepting our consent agenda, may indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay. Our consent agenda passes unanimously four to zero. This evening, we have one resolution. Consider Resolution 201842, a resolution awarding the contract for the senior center roof replacement project, project number 2018-4. And so we'll call on Susan to give us a report. And Ann is here too. So give us a report on that roof project. Susan and Ann.
Yep, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the, a recommendation, we're here tonight, with a recommendation that you award the contract for the replacement of the senior center roof. This is a project we talked about as part of the budget process. It was a jointly sort of funded project with donations from friends of the senior centers and others, along with the City General Fund. You can see that the bids came in a little higher than we anticipated, which is happening now out in a tight construction market. But Cherry Roofing was the low bid. We've done all of the work with the Community Development Department to make sure that we're proceeding ahead under the requirements to award this contract. And we recommend that you do that so we can move forward with this during the senior center closure in September.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Susan? Hearing none, then any discussion among ourselves?
This has been a long-awaited roof, so.
Yeah.
It's delightful to see that it's going to come.
I think this was one topic that both Jeff and I, when we were newly, I was newly appointed, and Jeff took the job, that was one of the first public discussions we had. So we remember it well. Okay. So what I will do, okay, Adam?
Oh, I was just gonna say the same thing. I remember that meeting when this came up, and I'm happy to see that it's finally, finally getting taken care of. And I'm sure all the seniors will be very happy, as well as Ann.
Well, and we appreciate their support.
Spent so much discussion.
Okay, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2018-42.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Adam. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously four to zero. We now have a discussion on ordinance adoption process. And so David, we'll turn some time over to you to bring us up to date on this discussion.
I've got a memo.
You don't have any plastic bags or anything for us to play with?
No, no plastic bags. Car cruises. So I'm just gonna walk you briefly through this memo, one-page memo with one-page supporting document to outline the process that's set out in the city charter related to the adoption of ordinances. The attached page is the portion from the charter that deals specifically with ordinances, as well as the one code section that we have on file in the McMinnville Municipal Code related to the preparation of ordinances. But this is just to keep up a discussion, then I'm gonna step back because it's really your discussion to have. The question came up regarding what the process is that the city follows related to the adoption of ordinances, whether in one reading, two readings, one meeting or two, how and when public testimony is taken related to it. So walking you through the process, the basic rule set out in the charter is that before final passage of an ordinance, every ordinance must be read fully and distinctly in an open council meeting on two different days. There are exceptions to that basic rule because you probably would note that I never read ordinances fully and completely twice on two separate days, or even one individual day for that matter. So there's an exception within the charter for the requirement that ordinances be passed after being presented to the council on two different days. The exception provides for ordinances to be passed in a single meeting if two conditions are met. First, if approval of the ordinance is by unanimous vote of the council. And secondly, if the first reading of the ordinance is by full, and then the second reading is by title. Now, I would also note that there's an exception that allows for the reading of ordinances by title, that allows for any full reading, whether it's the first full reading or the second full reading, to be by title only if no council member requests to have the ordinance read in full, or if we followed certain filing and notice requirements at least seven days before the meeting, and no substantial changes are made after filing the ordinance with the city recorder and posting it in several places seven days before the meeting. The way this typically occurs in practice, and the way we have the script set up for the mayor, is after the first meeting, we take a vote of the council. And if the vote is to pass the ordinance on for its first reading, and that vote is unanimous, and that's just a voice vote, if that's unanimous by the council, then we will proceed to the second reading on the same night unless there's been some discussion, changes proposed to the ordinance. But typically, if there's no changes proposed to the ordinance, it passes that first reading unanimously, then we'll proceed directly to the second reading. If that initial vote on the first reading, if that's not unanimous, then we automatically push the second reading of the, of the ordinance to a second meeting at a later date. That's just by, in practice, that's how we've, that's how we've conducted it. Now, when we take a final vote on the ordinance, so after the second reading, we take a final vote, that has to be taken by a roll call vote with the ayes and the nays recorded in the minutes. That's why the second reading is by roll call, whereas the first reading is simply by a voice, voice vote. And then in terms of effective date, just because that's also covered in here, an ordinance is effective on the, on the 30th day after enactment, unless the council provides for a later effective date, which you can do at your discretion, or the council declares an emergency, in which case the ordinance can take effect earlier, including immediately, if that's the, the nature of the emergency. In either the, and I would note that this ordinance adoption process is not dealing with land use ordinances, which are governed by a separate statutory process. We, I think we do want to talk about that a little bit in terms of how we take public testimony on those. From a planning perspective, there's, there's a timeline that we have to take final action by the city for those. But that's not what I'm talking about right now. So forget I said anything. I'll come back to that. For your general ordinances, there's no requirement in the charter or in the municipal code that the city solicit or receive testimony through any kind of a process, public hearing or otherwise, before passage of the ordinance. Now, that doesn't mean it's not a good idea for the council to take public testimony. I'm simply saying the charter doesn't require it. So whatever procedures you develop for taking public testimony are at the discretion of the council. And then finally, there's a provision in the municipal code that talk about how ordinances are prepared. All ordinances are required to be prepared by the city attorney. And no ordinances are allowed to be prepared for presentation to the council unless either ordered by a majority vote of the council present, or at the request of the mayor or the city manager, or prepared independently by the city attorney with the approval of the mayor or the city manager. So essentially, majority vote of the council, the mayor or the manager can approve an ordinance to be brought forward to the council for consideration. Okay? Or I could do it with their permission.
So just to reiterate, if you feel a matter needs further, or there should be time between the initial reading and the second reading, all that has to happen is somebody does need to have a vote against the ordinance.
If somebody, the way it's structured right now, the way we're structured right now is if somebody objects to the, basically, when the vote is taken to pass the first reading of the ordinance, if somebody votes against that, then it's not unanimous passage of the ordinance at the first reading. We automatically kick it to a second meeting before the second reading is, is had by the council. If it's unanimous passage of the first reading, as a matter of practice, at this point, we've been holding the second reading the same night. Yep.
The vote on the first reading is just to consider the ordinance, isn't it? It's not, you're not voting on the ordinance.
The, the, the motion that's presented by the mayor is a motion to pass the ordinance to its second reading.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's what the language is.
Yeah, right. Now...
So that's the consideration, or you unanimously, but then at that point, if people unanimously vote to consider, to consider it, then you could go straight to a second reading. Got it?
That's correct.
And typically, David, when does the deliberation for the council occur? It seems like we normally, do we read it first and then we deliberate?
So normally, we'll do, the first reading will occur, and it's a reading by title by me. And then at that point, once I've read, read it by title, then you'll get your staff presentation. You'll have your council deliberation or questions to staff. Typically, at that point, the mayor will call on any members of the public that want to provide testimony regarding, we don't call it a public hearing. We don't advertise it as a public hearing on the agenda, which may be something we want to consider, just for the sake of clarity for those that are participating, to know that they will have a time to provide comment on ordinances, because it will be published in the agenda. We don't do that right now. And then there'll be deliberation by the council before we vote to pass it from the first reading to the second reading.
Okay, discussion among council.
Aside, aside from the hearing process, I don't know that I'd want to change what's happening. I mean, I know we have a public hearing with the land use process, but I think just structured comments and something like that would be all, I wouldn't change it to a public hearing for all the other ordinances. Why do that? It seems like, personally, I favor leaving the ordinance as it is, or the procedure.
Well, the ordinance is in place. So what we're looking at, I think, is just how we handle that correctly.
That's right. And that's really, it's the council's rules for how they conduct business that we've been, I guess, interpreting. And the script has been written to reflect that, that process.
And I think what's in front of us right now is we've had a discussion that all ordinances have a second reading on a separate council meeting time. And so I think that's what's before us right now.
Well, the piece that's clarified, that's been clarified to me is that if someone objects at the first reading, then it shouldn't be moved to a second. But I do think we've had at least one instance that I can think of where we moved to a, to a second reading on the same night after somebody objected to the first. So I agree with, now that I understand that... So, I, I agree with, now that I understand that a little better, I do think that, that giving a person, as much as I did in, in that particular instance, an opportunity to object and move it to a second reading, that's adequate for me, for sure.
And, and from my perspective, and I've seen this change, 'cause I think the wording has changed since I've been mayor and initially, it was very cumbersome, just be following what was going on, but I find it very, very succinct and helpful now. And I, I think with our greater understanding, there's many ordinances that we're all on the same page, there's not any input, and to take it to a second reading would just bela, belabor the, the process a little bit.
Well, I mean, I, I just think that if a counselor has a concern, then, then at that point, they raise it and then it's gonna get kicked to a second meeting, no matter what anybody else thinks.
And I think we.
So, I think that's fine. The, the only other point that I'd make, Mayor, is that although there's no requirement for a public hearing, and I'm not suggesting we change the ordinance to require a public hearing, I do think that it's a good idea on the ordinances that we do to at least open a public hearing, even if nobody testifies.
Or would you say public hearing or comment?
Just comments.
That's fine, either, either.
'Cause I think we're doing that at this point.
We, we, we are. It's, I, I think if, if, if I were to make one suggestion is that we, we make some changes to the, how, how we identify that on the agenda so that folks who are not familiar with the council process, who may be coming to their first council meeting because something of interest is on the agenda for them on an ordinance, that they know that they will have an opportunity to give testimony or, or, or give, give their comments at the time that ordinance is called up. They don't have to do it, or we would actually probably want to discourage them from doing it during the initial public comment period, just so that you're getting those public, those comments on that ordinance at the time the ordinance is being considered.
If I can also interject, for, for those ordinances that are land use ordinances, if there's, if there is a public hearing, and actually, I would recommend this for any public hearing, we should notice the public hearing in advance so that it's not just those people who are regularly attending city council meetings can engage, but if there's something that somebody wants to, information, an item that somebody is very interested in and wants to engage in, that they're aware that that's occurring and that the public hearing is available to them. We would need to do that for land use ordinance.
If I could get clarification, are you, we're talking about publishing notice in the newspaper of public hearings, not just announcing it as a part of our standard public meeting notice?
So, notifying people of public hearings in advance of the meeting is the, is what we would need to do. How we do it, we could decide. That makes sense.
I, I agree.
And, and in land use, there's a, there's a specific process in terms of notice that has to be mailed out to folks within a certain distance of the, but not for general city council. So, you know, the ordinances, the non-land use ordinances that the council is considering can be of larger capability.
So, other bodies, like, for example, the legislature, when the legislature's in session, for a certain period of time, they have to give public notice 24 hours in advance. They have a very tight schedule, we have a much broader schedule, so. I, I, I think that the notice that the city sends out is generally pretty good ahead of the meetings. I do think that it's oftentimes difficult with the sched, the newspapers' publishing schedule for them to sometimes get everything, but they've always been very complimentary of, of the city getting information to them.
Yeah. They're, they're in touch with us if we're not Johnny-on-the-spot getting the packets to them before their Friday deadline.
Just a clarification from my perspective. You know, typically, we have two opportunities for public comment. The first is just the general public comment that we start at the beginning of our meeting with some exceptions of things that we can talk about. We have set that up as just public comment coming to the council with no dialogue. And we've, by sad experience, we've had some prolonged discussions that just weren't appropriate. And so, understanding that that is just a time to take public comment, three minutes, 30 minutes, max. If we have an ordinance where there, an individual wants to have some dialogue, we do typically open that up to some dialogue, do we not, David?
You do, but, but I would again caution that if, that if you're engaging in a back and forth with somebody who's providing testimony, that you really discipline yourselves to, to only ask questions of clarification. If, if there was a particular point made that was not understood or, or was confusing, that, that you simply, that, that any, any, any dialogue with somebody giving testimony is limited to simply seeking clarification or something of that nature from, from them. Getting into a larger debate with them about the, the policy issue is probably not. They're not the ones you have to convince ultimately, it's your, it's your fellow counselors.
Right. So, a lot of that should be handled in the deliberation time or when the staff is speaking to us and explaining what the situation is. Frequently, and I, this happened to me a week or so ago, you know, one of the counselors came with a whole bunch of questions and the woman was not prepared at all to answer these questions. It was a staffing and it was my fault for not calling on staff first, but it still was very difficult and it was kind of bad for the person who was sitting up there. So, I don't like that kind of a situation.
Well, I just wanted to clarify because sometimes we, we do venture in areas that I think take away from the, the process, so. So, any other dialogue on this? If I'm hearing what's before us right now is with the clarification that we received this evening, is that we proceed with our, our reading of ordinances in, in the way that we've done it. And if anyone feels that there needs to be more time for input, then they just decline that, going on to the second reading.
And that happens in the motion, correct?
Yeah, it does.
That would, not, not in the dialogue necessarily, but in the motion, we would have to say now.
So, David, I think we're squared away from your perspective.
Thank you very much, David.
Yeah, this was a good discussion. Okay, we've had reports from councilors on committee and board assignments. Let's do our department heads. Matt, Susan?
I would just say that I came from the Aquatic Center where we're having the first stand-up paddle boarding yoga class tonight and there were 10 yoga, yogis in the pool and 10 yogis on the deck and a lot of family events happening out in the park as part of this. This is a test for us to see how the pool functions and also to just kind of try some new things. And I think we will probably be launching a class in the fall as a result of this. And there's another event, I think it's on the 26th, that's gonna be also free to the community if anybody wants to test out stand-up paddle boarding and see what it's like. They're having a lot of fun over there.
July 26th, stand-up paddle boarding yoga at the pool.
At the pool. I think it's the 26th.
And for those that are really good.
Bring, bring your own sup, or?
No, we actually have 10. The, the person that we're partnering with, which is Erin Bowman from Four Elements Yoga, has 10 stand-up paddle boards that she's using at the Aquatic Center right now. Those are hers, that she's contributing to it.
And for those very coordinated, yoga on a, a stand-up board is the next level.
Yes. A lot of core work there they were going through over there.
Mayor, just, Susan, could you clarify, is, is a practitioner of yoga a yogi?
I believe that is what the.
Is that it?
Yes, a yogi.
I didn't know that either.
Every day.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Heather?
I don't know how to follow that up. I did want to let you know, we are starting our Billable Lands Inventory work next week, so that's exciting. It's a long day coming. We've put together a project advisory committee. There's some councilors who've expressed an interest in being on it, so we invited you to be liaisons to that. And so, we're excited to see that move forward. We put out a call for volunteers to be on project advisory committees for three of our large land, long-range planning efforts and got over 100 volunteers. So, people are interested, they want to participate and they want to, they want to volunteer and serve the community. So, we're excited to see that.
Great.
Want to talk about planning staffing?
Oh, yeah. So, today's a good day 'cause we're staffed up. There's a light at the end of the tunnel. We have brought, we promoted Chuck Darnell into a senior planner position after going through a recruitment process. Susan helped me with that, so thank you, Susan. And then, we hired Tom Shower as a senior planner from Grants Pass. Tom just finished successfully leading Grants Pla, Grants Pass through a UGB amendment. He's looked at from the state level as being a authority on it now. They've, they actually communicated with me in the last two weeks to see if they could borrow him for some rulemaking committees that are coming forward. So, that's all good. So, we're excited. In fact, he, as of noon yesterday, six hour, four hours into his job, we assigned him as the project manager, manager for the BLI effort. And he's already worked with the consultants 'cause they were the same ones he worked with in Grants Pass. So, that's all good. And then, our third hire was Jamie Fluckenstein. I call him sort of the Kevin Bacon of McMinnville 'cause it seems like everyone I meet has some sort of seven-degree-of-separation relationship with him and he's only been here for two years, but he's very involved in the community. He's a landscape architect. So, he brings that different skillset to the team, so I'm, I'm excited about the team. I think we have a lot of different skillsets that complement each other and will serve this community well as we launch these larger projects.
And so, we'll.
Thank you for your support with that.
Well, will Jamie have the art, the landscape committee?
Yep, Jamie's gonna now lead that. He's also gonna work with Susan on parks-related stuff in terms of planning. Tom is going to be leading our McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force. He did that in Grants Pass as well, so that's good. And then Chuck will be leading our Historic Landmarks Commission. So, everyone's taking a lead with one of the committees.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your support with all that.
Well, Heather, you can breathe now.
Yes.
Melissa? David?
No.
And Jeff?
Just real quickly, there's been a lot of press and social media coverage about the correspondence the city had with Ruben Contreras about Drag the Gun and his subsequent decision to cancel the event. In the intervening several days, a number of people made contact with me, the mayor, the city attorney, any number of other folks to talk about what they might need to do to sustain a cruising tradition here in McMinnville. I think about 20 folks met around a week ago today. They, they came together with an idea, a group of five of those folks then met with our team on Friday afternoon. And if you have not had a chance, there's a brief article in the News Register online today that talks about the planning for an event, a single-day car show and cruising event in late August that appears to be moving forward. There's still some work to be done, but it looks like an event will occur and it's our hope that it'll be safe and enjoyable for all. The other thing that I have is just to let you know that I'll be attending the Oregon City County Managers Association Summer Conference for the rest of the week, so I'll be out of the office and out of town until Friday evening.
Thank you, Jeff. You have your cash and investment reports for March and April a part of your packet. Anything else that anyone would like to bring up? We've done very well this evening, so I'll go ahead and conclude this meeting.
That never happens.
Had nothing to do with it.
Just the one tonight.